Yeah, that's pretty much it.
You can't wash your hands enough.
This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and I am calling this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August 13th, and it is currently 7:01 PM. At this point, we'll move on to the second item on the agenda. Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here safely this evening, and we thank you for the position you've put us in, and we ask you to remind us our jobs we have, the responsibility that comes with the positions we have, and we ask for your guidance on making the right decisions for everyone in town. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance. We'll now move on to item five, adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Can I get a motion for five A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H? Adoption of minutes from May 7th, May 14th, May 21st, May 23rd, June 4th, June 11th, July 2nd, and July 9th. Motion has been made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Mr. Kertula. Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Substances? Motion carries. We'll now move on. Next item up on the agenda is item six, and we have nothing for item six. We also have nothing for item seven, so we'll move on to item eight, citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Clorio, I do know we have the comment that was submitted by Michael Huco. I will actually read that, so those at home can know what it is. Mr. Huco wrote that "At the special meeting on August 6, 2024, the council authorized the town manager to execute an agreement with Lake Road Generating Plant for a payment agreement in lieu of taxes. With this agreement, does the town have the have to pay back any money to Lake Road Generating Plant? If the town does, how much and where is the money coming from? I would like to go on record that I am against this agreement. Thank you." And that was from Michael Huco, 20 John Street, Killenly, Connecticut. Did we have any other comments submitted?
That was the only one submitted.
Okay, thank you. If anyone would like to make comment, please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Turn it on just a little closer. Okay, thank you. My name is Frank Alaman, 30 Sawmill Road, Dayville, and I'm here largely, if not totally, in response to this very nice sheet of paper that I saw about the possibility of a vision committee. And you do at the bottom say, "The town council is seeking input on some of this," so that's what I'm here for. I'll give you some input, okay? I want to commend all of you for moving forward on this. I think it's really good to be looking and thinking about the town, where it wants to be 10, 20 years in the future. Some of you may recall about three years ago, I actually submitted a letter to the council, probably on record still, suggesting this, and there was, as you know, a little, not much movement. So I'm delighted that you are now moving forward on this, and thank you for doing that. That's very, very good. Little bit of input then. I have some thoughts here, which I will give you a copy of later, in terms of the number of people that I think should be on the committee. I'll give you all the details there. And what you essentially would be doing, and this is based to a certain extent, if not a large extent, on the fact, I did do strategic planning for a corporation a long time ago, Union Carbide, for about five or six years. I did the strategic planning over in one of their divisions. And I did some of it with Conwalk Valley Community College when they were in the point of doing the expansion. We're going back some time, but I have some background, some understanding of what strategic planning is and creating a vision for the future. So what I will be detailing and giving you here for each of you to look at is some thoughts on how many people should be on the committee, that when you form the committee of citizens in town, and you want neutral citizens in town, and absolutely has to be balanced in terms of political areas, that it's a fair, we want it to be an open, fair, and good group of people who don't have any biases about what they want. They want, we want open minds on this, totally open minds, people who really want to think of the future of this town and just will give their input. Once a committee is formed, what you would do is the committee would do numbers of subcommittees based on business, art, health, planning and zoning, those groups that should have input into this. And each of those smaller groups then four get together, and they start getting input in different ways. There'll be town meetings where they solicit the public and get expert input from people they know who are in it, like health, for example. I would certainly would imagine Dave Kimball might have to have somebody on it, et cetera. So you can get the thoughts, what I'm saying here, okay? And once that has been done, they pull it together with public hearings to get the input. They pull together a recommendation, each small subcommittee, they send it back to the major committee, the vision committee, who look at it. They start pulling it together. Then they come up with a document that they submit to the public for the public to say, hmm, what is this? Tell us more about it. And then finally, there's an approval process at the end where you pull it together, everybody is in agreement. I cannot emphasize more than anything how much you want transparency in this. You want citizens involved. You don't, with due respect, I'm joking a little bit, not totally, this is not a council document. It is a document from the citizens in Killenly who have interest in their areas and what they want to do, and you pull it together. So again, I commend you for doing this, for moving it forward. I think it's great, and I know some other towns have been doing this for a while. We're ready to see where we want to be, let's say, 20 years from now. It's a vision, folks. It's a vision. That's all I have to say. I thank you. If I, I will give this to the chair to hand these out to everybody, but you'll give it. Again, my, my thanks.
Thank you.
I got two complaints this past month, so I just wanted to, I was asked to speak on them. This one is from Joe Higgins, 247 North Shore Road. This is Joe's feelings, not my feelings. On 7/12/2024, I visited the town hall at 11:45 AM, and all the doors were locked. A gentleman outside the building said they've been locking the doors daily between 15 minutes and half an hour before the posted closing time. Another resident was trying to enter at the same time as me and was confused and annoyed. Following this interaction, I brought it to the attention of my town council representatives. The council representative checked into this and informed me, the reason is they need time to count the money. I visited the Palmfort Town Hall on 7/17/2024 and asked why they don't need to close early to count the money. The longstanding tax collector stated, "There is no reason for that. She simply takes in the current payments up until closing time and then reconciles the next morning." She said, "There's no reason to have to reconcile that evening, and the banks aren't even open anyway. The money is always counted at the time of the transaction, so the reason for closing early to count money doesn't make sense to me. Close the register at closing time and don't take any new transactions at that moment. Just like any other businesses in town, the town hall has posted hours for a reason, and they should be honored. Thank you." Joe Higgins, 247 North Shore Road. So that's the first one. And the second complaint I got, there were concerns about the Peep Toad Road being built 100% financed by the government, that we wouldn't have any control over making sure that it was rebuilt in a historic way because it's a historic bridge. So I don't know if there's anything we can do to have some type of say in that. I know where we, you know, it's 100% funded by someone else. I don't know how that works. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on the agenda. Next item up is council and staff comments. I would just like to make a comment in response to the one we had received from Mr. Huco. For clarification purposes, the money that was allocated for capital projects out of the Lake Road Generating Fund had that, the portion that wasn't expended was the portion that was being disputed. Basically, what happens now is we now know how much of the money that they've paid over the years that this tax has been disputed. We know how much of that we can use for capital projects, and my understanding is, and Ms. Clorio, you can correct me on this, is that based off the payment that's due coming up in September, that there wouldn't be any refund, any money left over would be rolled into that payment.
So yes, the overpayment for the previous taxes was, any of the disputed amount of the previous taxes was held in a reserve fund. So until this settlement was reached or decision finalized, decision was made, the town will now be able to release that disputed amount. The overpayment for the previous tax year will be like, will be looked, will be looking to apply that to the current tax bill based on the agreement. Lake Road will still have a small amount that will be due, or an amount due that will still be due by the, by September, due date for this current year, and then they will be current with their taxes. But the refund that he's referring to was money that Lake Road had paid to us based on the previous year's tax bill, but it was held in a reserve fund, so we don't have to come up with the money from anywhere. It's been held in a reserve fund this entire time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on.
I got, I got one, Jason, sorry. So on Joe Higgins' comment, I would like to see us change the writing on the wall on the door, Mary, to accurately reflect that it's, if that's correct, that the writing on the door is wrong.
So we do have on the door that the, that the doors close to the public 30 minutes ahead of the posted schedule time. It's on the doors, it's on the websites, it's in red lettering on the websites, it's on every page, and that is, we don't, we don't change the close time because the staff is still available. If you call them or email them, a lot of the times they are also responding to emails or calls that they haven't been able to get to during the regular workday based on volume. But, you know, we've reviewed our cash handling procedures, and one of your cash handling procedures is to reconcile your cash drawer at closeout before it sits overnight. You may have two different people handling that, and so you should be reconciling your drawer before you, as your normal closeout for the day. So it is posted on absolutely every sign that we have and on the website completely. So I understand different towns may do it differently, and that's entirely up to them. That's their procedure. We have a significantly higher volume, and so, you know, we want to make sure that we're not requiring staff to stay past their punch-out time to provide that required reconciliations. And then as far as Peep Toad Bridge Road, I did speak to a concerned citizen that does live out in that direction, that was very concerned and has stated many times their concern around the replacement of that bridge. Just because it is being funded by federal and state funding does not mean that we do not have any local input. They are just beginning the design, they will be required to hold public hearings on their design at different percentages of design completion. We'll likely look to have them held right here at the town hall, so that way citizens can come, get the presentation from Connecticut DOT on what the proposal is, and receive feedback on that. The town staff will also be able to be involved in that conver, in that conversation. I will say, Peep Toad, Peep Toad Stone Arch Bridge is not going to be a Stone Arch Bridge when it's completed. There's no way to bring that up to current standards with the existing design that's there. We would look to try and have them put in some sort of aesthetic component to at least speak to the design of that, to at least show some historical nature of it, but we're not, they're not going to be able to put up a Stone Arch Bridge. That's unrealistic for today's design standards and the design standards required by state DOT, so. But we will be having that direct input in the process, even though it is funded by federal and state dollars, we do have that local design input. And the citizens, more importantly, will have the ability to participate in public hearings at different stages in the design process.
That's good, thank you, Mary. And on the door, somehow I was told that it wasn't on the door, so I'm glad it's on the door. And in terms of the other thing, I personally do not mind that, you know, people are closing half an hour. That's a citizen's.
Sure, no, I, I just wanted to reflect and understand why. I appreciate that.
I want to thank Frank for coming in and talking about the vision. He's kind of brought this up multiple times, and finally here, and you're here too, which is good. Thank you.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you for your input, Frank, and two other things I just want to touch on. I do know there have been times where I've walked in a door for the town hall, whether it's for the tax collector's office, the town clerk's office, one or two minutes before when they close the door, and it gives the town staff time to handle someone like myself who walks in a minute or two before closing, to where I've got some business that's going to take 10, 15 minutes. If I walk in one or two minutes before the end of their shift, then there's a good possibility that they'd have to stay over. And it's not just me, it's any citizen that walks in. So it gives them time to wrap up business with anyone who's walked in the door just before the doors get locked. One thing I will suggest as far as the Peep Toad Road Bridge, one bridge we can look at is the one on Tracy Road, the three, where 395 Overpass is, where they did it almost, I don't know whether it was stamped concrete or what they did.
It is, it's a stamped concrete, and that's likely the application that they would use, something along those lines that we could advocate for, that they would likely at least hearken to that.
Yeah.
Just a question, is there a, is there a, when they take that down, will they at least reuse that stone? Will that stone, is that impossible?
Wouldn't be cost-effective.
Yeah, it wouldn't be cost-effective for them to reuse it.
Even to give it away to someone?
Yeah, no, probably, likely not.
Okay.
And there's no parts of it that can be saved, like saved to put anywhere?
Not really, no. No.
I mean, when they took apart the wall by Westfield, everybody thought that was a nice solid wall, and it really ended up not being, yeah, solid at all, so. They cut corners even, even back in the 1800s.
All right. Any more comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item 10, we do not have any appointments this month, so we'll move on to item 11A, Board of Education Liaison, and I do not see one. They actually don't meet during the summer. 11B, Borough Council Liaison.
The council, Borough Council does not meet in July and August. We do have some other business in the borough, but it's not up for public consumption at this point. Still kind of like an executive, not executive session, but there's some in, in housekeeping stuff we're doing, so.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 12A, Discussion and Acceptance of Monthly Budget Reports, Summary Report on General Fund Appropriations for Town Government. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Kertula, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion or comments?
I have a comment. So last meeting, Mary, I talked about how, I mean, I'm going to not explain it right, but it looked like 11 months, and would we see the 12 months? Like now we see the first month. Do you know what I mean?
Correct.
Is there somewhere to see where we ended up?
Right, so we're still closing out the year end, which is why you haven't received that.
Okay.
We'll be in your likely fiscal subcommittee will be receiving in September, the closeout transactions, you know, we usually do the year-end transfers. That takes place, and then we'll be able to, hopefully be able to get the draft from the auditors, and that's when you really see where you land for the end of the year. So auditors were out today in pre-planning, so that's, that's a good positive. But yes, we're still in closeout phase.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Substances? Motion carries. We'll now move on. Item 12B, we do not have a budget from the Board of Ed, so we'll move on to item 13A, Town Manager's Report.
So my first part is just giving you some law enforcement statistics. As you can see, call volume has remained relatively level over the course of this year, and I want to highlight that this call volume is every call, so it can, it's not necessarily criminal activity, it doesn't, it's not reflective of criminal activity. It's, you know, if somebody calls for a wellness check, all of that gets recorded here. As you can see, I did put the more specific ones, like investigations, that is likely, so you can see how much as far as volume-wise for the total fiscal year, how much we had, and how much, as you can see from investigations, the town, our constables are handling almost 50%, just a little under 50% of the total investigations, which investigations take a fair amount of time, right? That's not just a, you know, let me take a report and then I move on. There's a fair amount of investigation, a fair amount of follow-up work that has to go with that. And then as you can see, for citations and warnings, largely those are being issued by Troop D, which largely you're seeing that along the 395 corridor and those immediate roads there off of there. For the next piece, I wanted to go over fall events, and it's really, I wanted to discuss how Celebrate Killenly, we really haven't talked about Celebrate Killenly, that typically has been falling on the second Saturday in September. The past couple of years, we've really questioned whether or not that's really good timing for it, just because it seems that we're competing with a lot of other community events that are taking place on the same weekend, and it tends to sometimes collide periodically with memorials for 9/11, too, and that's been, you know, kind of disruptive as well. So we really wanted to look at making a longer, more robust community engagement events, and so we're really trying to wrap it in with Spooktacular. So Spooktacular this year is really going to be made up of a number of different days of events. So I gave you this calendar of events. We're going to start off on Wednesday before, Wednesday, October 23rd, with Witches in Connecticut at the Killenly Public Library. They're going to do a Halloween costume on the Little Theater on Broad Street. We will have our, on Thursday, there's going to be The Hauntings of Downtown Danielson, which is going to be sponsored by KBA. Friday will be a teen lock-in party at the Killenly Public Library. Hocus Pocus will be shown on the Westfield Church Lawn. Descendants, Little Theater on Broad Street will begin their production of Descendants, and that will follow through the next couple of days. On the 25th, the Descendants, they're going to do their sensory-friendly show, and I will say, anyone who has children or adults that, you know, volume of music, heavy light changes can be impactful to an individual and their ability to really take in a show like that. Their sensory show is phenomenal. It's really great. They're going to do Trick or Treat on Main Street. They'll do a DJ and glow stick party, and then the Halloween block party in Davis Park, leading up to the Spooktacular Light Parade. And then Sunday, Descendants will have their last production. If it rains on Saturday, the rain date for the Spooktacular Light Parade is going to be on Sunday. And then we'll wrap out on Monday with Ghost Hunters International star Andy Andrews coming to Westfield Church. So just a bunch of different things, and a lot of different community partners, right? KBA is being involved, library is being involved, you know, Westfield Church is being involved, but we have a lot of different things that are going on throughout that, so we really think that this is going to be a really great opportunity for many people to engage.
I want to go back to the calls. Is there any way to add like break-ins, car thefts?
I don't get those statistics from Troop D. What I get right here is what, what we get for statistics from Troop D.
Is there any way you can ask for that?
I can try and see if I get breakdown. We, they, we, they don't, it depends on how they code it in their system, and they don't have a lot of different codes in their system. So I'll ask them, but I'm not sure that I will get additional.
Because I'm asked about actual crimes, like break-ins, car thefts, car break-ins.
Yeah, we, we, I've never seen a report that breaks it down by those, by that specific type of category.
I mean, if it was like break-ins, some, like, something like that, I'm, I'm asked about it.
I'll, I'll check.
Okay.
I'll check.
I would, having, having sat with the, that committee, that's probably listed under the investigations, because those, those take a lot.
Depends on how they go into their system, and sometimes if they initially get put in as investigation, but then ultimately turn into something different, that original coding doesn't always change, so sometimes the numbers, you know, don't, in, when you get into smaller buckets, they don't always reflect. The next thing is Owen Bell dredging. I was out there today, so the dredging project is actually going very well. As of today, we've only relocated eight turtles. They've all gone to the vernal pool. None of them have decided to come back. Our biggest one was a snapping turtle that was about this big. He was a pretty good-sized boy, but the rest of them, or girl, I don't know which, the rest of them have all been sun turtles about that big or smaller. But overall, been going really well, actually, the past two days, it's been dry enough that we haven't had to put the, the material up on the soccer field for de-watering. We've been able to haul it straight out, which is great, right? Less impact on that soccer field, that's fantastic. I will say, the highway crews have been just humming along with this, so it's really been a very, very good operation, and they've been very thoughtful throughout the entire process. So we've, we've come to almost complete grade on the, on the one side that we're working on right now. They think that we're going to be wrapped up with that and the little bit of expansion that we're doing to the pond right there, hopefully by Thursday. If that's the case, we will, we have to do a little bit of work to the culvert that's over there that we can easily do now that there's no water right there, just clean that up. And then they're going to let it naturally refill. The hope is that it will naturally rejuvenate, and then we'll be able to start moving the fish from the current watered side over, rather than trying to flood them in, so that way you have less sediment, you know, billowing up and stuff like that, and it would be less stress. So we're going to try and give that a shot, and hopefully that will pool up enough so that way we can get that done and start the other side on Monday. So we're in really good shape with that, and, you know, I really appreciate how thoughtful the highway crews have been in managing this, doing it incredibly safe, safely, and really, you know, cognizant of any impact to any of the wildlife out there. So they've been doing a really great job. So I included a couple of those pictures. And then Killenly Memorial School, I did get an update. Jason, you had asked me for an update on that. So the freezer drain issue got corrected already. They had identified that, and that's been corrected, so they did move that drain. They were able to move it, there's a, there was a tunnel underneath. They've done final classroom cleaning, they're allowing teachers in to start setting up classrooms. So classrooms are being set up right now. They've already, I think they've almost completed final paving. The sidewalks that were damaged, that they noticed had damage to them, have already been replaced, so there's no additional sidewalk replacement that they need to do. They've already reported them. And we do know that there will be some continued work that's going to happen in September, but it is in rooms that are, that are behind the stage area, and that work will happen out but it is in rooms that are, that are behind the stage area and that work will happen outside of school hours. So it will not happen while children are in school, they will get into those rooms after school hours. So, um, that will, um, that hopefully should wrap up early part of September. We should be able to wrap those out and then that will, um, complete the project. We're still going through, um, you know, punch-ins on a regular, you know, punch lists on a regular basis. Um, but, um, we're kind of to the tail end of that project.
Is there going to be, um, a walkthrough for the public?
Um, I'm not sure that we're going to have a pub, be able to have a public walkthrough before school starts. I think realistically, we also need to give the, um, school maintenance team an opportunity to get in there as well. Um, so I think, uh, you know, if you do a public walkthrough, they're going to have to come back in and clean the school again. Um, so I think, I don't know that we're going to get that done. They will have an open house, you know, the school generally, they usually have their normal open house anyway. Um, I would have to work with the school team to find out if they can do a separate walkthrough. But, you know, the permanent building, permanent building commission, um, when they have special meetings, they do walkthroughs. I don't know if, I, they might do another special meeting this month. We tend to like special meetings as opposed to regular meetings, right Kevin? Um, I don't know why we even put a regular schedule, but anyway, um, they try and do a walkthrough. So we may have to do one more through there and anybody's been able to join those.
No, I've got one question, cause it was brought up, some of the sidewalk repair, cause I did the, I went on the walkthrough.
Yeah.
Uh, last week, uh, last Wednesday. And there were some spots on the sidewalk that was, there was still damage on. Have those been reported since last Wednesday?
Yeah, I was told they were.
Been reported prior to that.
Yeah, I got this update from, um, Mary on, um, Friday. And so it was after your, after the.
Wednesday and Friday.
They had already reported.
Okay.
That's what I was, that's what she was informed, so she'll be going back out there, trust me, to make sure. But that's what she was informed, so.
So that would mean they reported on Thursday.
Right.
Since it was Wednesday night and maybe by Friday it was done. Um, one question I'd have is, did they complete the, um, making the stage ADA accessible? Cause I know there was an issue with a panel on the backside of the wall, that they had to move the panel before they could cut the wall through.
Yeah, they were finalizing that, so they're still working through that, they haven't completed that yet. That's still in the process.
Um, and just so everyone knows, tomorrow night, there is a walkthrough at, um, Westfield.
Westfield.
And that's at six o'clock Kevin, I think it is.
Sure.
Do we have another meeting scheduled? I don't think so, no.
No, we just had one last week.
Yeah, we just had one last week, I don't think we have another special, we don't have another meeting tonight. I'll double check, maybe.
Because when I was on the walkthrough last week, Mary Brom had mentioned a walkthrough on.
That was last week.
Before, you were the.
Oh, I missed a week.
You missed a week.
Alright, I missed, I missed.
That was last week, I'm like, we've already done that, we were up on the roof, weren't we?
Yeah, we were up on the roof, we were around the.
Yep, me, me, me being sick as a dog last week turned me off. Okay.
So it was, it was more than 24 hours for them to clean, clean that sidewalk too.
That's what I was trying, I lost.
Yeah. I, I will tell you, the roof was, was an interesting, that was an interesting walk through.
One. Um, and then as far as the congressionally directed spending, um, application that we put forward for the wastewater treatment facility, um, we did receive, um, notification from the Senate Appropriations Committee that our application was not selected for funding. Um, we have reached out to Murphy's office and Courtney's office, we are scheduling, I did talk to Murphy, um, Senator Murphy, when he was out on Friday, um, we, you know, he was at both, uh, the chamber meeting and then, um, on our walkthrough with the access agency, I had some opportunity to talk, to talk to him. And, um, we're also going to be meeting with DEEP. So we're going to bring all of those stakeholders together. I think the information that we really got from the federal side was that, I think they were under the impression that we were trying to see that the feds were going to fund it 100%. And their, you know, response was, it can't be 100% federal funding, which we understand that. This is a collective cooperative. Mae Flexer was out there for Senator Murphy's, uh, for the, for both, uh, both meetings. Um, and I, you know, Mae's willing to participate in those meetings as well from a state level. So I think getting all of those stakeholders in hand, because it does need to be a collaborative and cooperative, um, approach. So I think that we, um, we can, um, make some headway, but, um, we'll be setting up those meetings with those various legislative delegations and pulling them all together. And I also, um, seeing if we can schedule, um, them to come and do a site visit.
Thank you. Ms. Grandelsky.
But we're still with DEP, we're two, almost two and a half years overdue with their review of our permit down there.
Yep.
And as I said, at the battery storage, they're, they were going to get their review within 75 days. And I said, I was offended because all these other entities get special treatment, they're not even on board. And here we rely on this, now we have a moratorium. I don't know how we light a fire under DEP. I, 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 I'm glad, you know, at least Mae was there with Courtney last week, but how do we? This, and then Frito-Lay is the same thing, their permit has not been renewed, uh, yeah, renewed or, they're working on the old permits. So it's like, it really puts us in a, not a good situation.
It, you know, I haven't, we, we agree, you know, it would be great to have DEP respond more timely for permit renewals. Um, that is historically how they have been. Um, you know, I think.
But that's when they usually put more constraints on us, when they renew the permits. We're going under a certain, whatever the BODs and all that stuff is. We were at eight million and every permit renewal, they cut us back. Yeah, the eight million still stays there, but the reality, we keep going down, so.
Yep, and you know, our hope is that by bringing, um, our legislative delegation from the federal, the state, and also, um, the state DECD, um, the Department of Economic and Development at the state, into this conversation, you know, inviting deep into this conversation, hopefully we will then be able to get some, some movement. Um, but really, you know, we have to collaborate this together. So, you know, we're looking at community investment funds on the state level as well as the federal dollars. And then where's the gap in that funding, um, in order to be able to get something moving forward on that capacity? And it may be that we initially try and look at the smaller dollar of just getting the design dollars, get that locked up and get us moving on design before all of the parties will commit to construction dollars.
Is there anything like, I guess it was briefly talked about ARPA funds or fund balance to do something to start the design? Or I don't know how far we could go with that, but that, that we're making a real good effort on our part.
Yeah, I mean, there, that's something that we, you know, we mentioned, I mentioned at the last meeting when you brought this up, is that, you know, the council still does have unexpended or undesignated ARPA funds that will have to be designated before Sep, uh, before December 31st of this year. Um, perhaps that's a utilization of it, I know there's many pulling demands, um, on those funds. And, you know, what's really the, you know, priority, what, what gains the priority of that? That's going to be up to the council for decision. Um, but you, you know, that could be something that you decide to, you know, show that the community has investment in this by putting those funds towards that. Um, and that's showing the state and the feds that it, you know, you're, you're putting money in as well. Um, that could be an opportunity, but.
Sometimes we say, maybe some of that may not be reimbursable, you know, always looking at getting everything 100% reimbursable. But sometimes you've got to put some skin in the game upfront to get a better, a better return.
Sometimes when you have design ready, um, it's easier to get construction money and easier to move the needle than when you are coming with, you know, we know we need more, but we don't have any plans for it yet. You know, if, if there was, if you have design plans in place and something that can better quantify the construction dollars, sometimes it's easier to make that pitch.
Can we get a copy of the letter from the Appropriations Committee saying they did not accept our, I'd like to see that if we.
Sure, it was an email.
Okay, whatever.
Yeah, I'll print it off.
You know, that would be.
Sure. Yep.
To show it to some, whoever wants to see it.
Yep, I can do that.
At least they can say, we, we were out there, that's kind of.
Yep, I will, I will definitely get that to you.
Ms. Murphy?
So this is in response to the letters that were just written July 31st? So they already responded within two weeks or is this from previous?
No, we had submitted back in April, um, for April, yeah, I think the deadline was in April to submit for the congressional, for these, for this funding, the application was due back in April. We did forward to them the moratorium letters as well to be incorporated as part of the application. But, you know, really, um, uh, they had had the application previously.
Thank you.
So, uh, I've got something on this fall events and maybe it is to Tammy to relay back to them. Uh, and some of the events may not be Halloween, I can't quite tell, there's a couple that I don't know what they are, like teen lock party and sensory or whatever. But, uh, again, this is for constituents, not for me, I love Halloween. I have heard that some people do not celebrate Halloween because of their religion. So it, to relay back Tammy for next year, maybe have one night where, uh, it's not a Halloween related thing for those people. So if you're going to have four or five nights, there's, there's a night that's not about Halloween.
I'll relay back, that back to the team. And I do know that Bucky has mentioned that perhaps in the future, because it's going to, they're really looking to have it be a multi-day event, that we look at perhaps creating a committee, um, or even a subcommittee out of the recreation, um, the rec commission to really plan through this. So that way it's, you know, multiple visions that are coming in play and we're able to kind of take those. He is, you know, recommending that moving forward, there'd be some sort of planning committee involved.
Thank you. Any other comments? Um, I know we had a conversation yesterday regarding cotton bridges, is there any update on that?
Not at this time.
Okay. Um, I know it's been a while since I've heard anything, the issue with the horses, has that been resolved?
The horses were removed, oh, that, that, um, case did resolve and the horses were eventually adopted out.
Okay.
Do you know what the approximate cost was to the town for that?
I don't have it off the top of my head, I was not prepared for that.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's.
I don't want to give you a bad number, I just don't.
With the new cotton bridge development, it made me, reminded me of the horses and I, I remembered not ever getting a number as far as what it cost the town.
Yeah, I completely slipped my mind.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Next item up on the agenda is the town manager's evaluation form. Um, everyone had one in their mailboxes. Um, I do want to say that I've gotten some feedback over the past couple of years regarding the town manager's evaluation. One of the comments was, um, that council members have, need to do a better job as far as, uh, meeting with town staff. Um, cause there is a portion of the evaluation that, uh, entails, uh, Mary's interaction with staff or working with the staff. Um, so I did, I did get that feedback, so I would encourage everyone, if they can, um, to possibly meet with town staff just to get, uh, a better idea. So when we're doing the evaluation, it's as accurate as possible. The other piece of feedback I've gotten, and I've done a little bit of research myself, um, is the formatting of the review. Um, it was brought up a couple of times over the past couple of years. If you look at the rating process, um, the one through four, the ratings are actually skewed to the positive side. And it's been brought up, how can you have a accurate review? If the ratings actually skewed, you're almost rating on a curve. Um, I looked at a lot of reviews, I was hard pressed to find any reviews that were set up the way this one is with one being needs improvement, two being satisfactory, and then you have two that are positive. One neutral, one negative. Um, I struggled to find that it were set up that way. Any of the ones I found that had four, there was no neutral position, there were two negatives, two positives. Um, a lot of the ones I saw that had a neutral, well, all the ones I saw that had a neutral, there was a five number scale. Where, and which is the way our reviews had been prior to, I think, about three, four years ago when that got changed.
The last time it was changed was when Hendrix was here.
Yep, yep.
So, over five years ago.
So when, when our previous town manager was here, our reviews then were, it was a five number scale, three being neutral, i- in a sense, meets expectations, doesn't exceed, doesn't fail. Um, so my recommendation would be, well, I threw together two different things. One where we do a different scaling, where, let me pull it out real quick.
If I'm, if I may?
Yep.
Cause this is under communications, um, not an agenda item.
Okay.
I don't know if, um, if, if you want to discuss or consider re, you know, redoing the form, that's perfectly fine. But, um, I just want to make sure that, you know, if you want it, that we would look to put it as a full agenda item for discussion. Um, or if you want to add it to tonight's meeting, I just want to be clear, we're under that communications portion, where I just was, I was just handing this out to you guys, because this is the form that's been used for the last number of years since I've been here, so, you know, entirely up to you guys.
When is it due? I know I, I was late last time.
A lot of times it's, comes in later than I would like to get them, but, um, there is no, right now, we don't have a set.
Put it on the next one or we could make a motion either way.
Um, I mean, what, I can pass out what I, after the meeting, I can pass out what I, what I printed out and everybody just email me back your input and see if either one of the ones I've got.
Okay, can I just ask protocol? So Mary, if we were to change it, does that have to be an agenda item?
Yeah, so in the past, I can tell you how it's been handled in the past. In the past, um, the council deliberates on the form of the, um, item and then you essentially vote on setting, this is what the evaluation form is going to be. So it has been an agenda item in the past for conversation by the council and setting what this is eventually. And then you guys proceed with whatever evaluation. That's been my experience, I don't know what happened during the brief time period that I wasn't here when this got changed from what they were doing before, when, you know, when Benway was here, it got changed, I believe, once when Benway was here as well. And, you know, each council, you know, periodically will go through and decide that they want to change the questions or want to change the format, right? Which is fine. Um, so, but my experience has been that it's a council, it's an agenda item for a conversation of how you want to formally adopt the, the evaluation process. It's been done by resolution.
Uh, I will say this, the last evaluation for Mr. Hendrix was not this format. I've been on the council since then, we have actually never had any meeting or come up with any resolution to change it. Um, I don't know at what point it did get changed, um, but there was never a resolution. And I know Ed's been on that long, Kevin, you've been on that long. Um, do either of you remember any time where we've had a resolution on the format? Or is it just printed and put in our mailbox?
It was when the first review I did was with Mr. Hendrix and it was like, you get in, get on in December and then we got them early then, it was like April or May.
Yeah.
Um, and.
Usually May, May to June, yeah.
Because if there's a, if there's a, an increase, it's effective July 1st. So we're already in August, middle of August now, you know? Um, and I don't remember the format then, to be honest with you.
Was very similar, you know, I don't.
I, I have, I have.
Never noticed really a change, it just, okay, just work with what was here, I had no issue. But it never went to a, here's a resul, you know, go through it and this is what we want, I never saw that.
I mean, the U. I mean, the U on the form actually could technically be a neutral. Unable to.
Unable to rate?
Yeah.
But then we'd be changing the format. I mean, I, I have no problem whether we add it to an agenda item or I just pass out a couple different options or we have a meeting. Um, but like I said, I mean, Mary had mentioned it was done by resolution, but I know my time on a council, we've, we've never done it by resolution.
I don't, I don't remember that.
And it may be worthwhile, like Kevin talked about, getting them out earlier in the year that way.
Right, 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 should be, yeah.
Yeah.
It's been one of my goals is to get them out earlier.
Get them out earlier.
I know the budget comes and that ties up a lot of time, uh, and before the budget, there's something else going on that.
Depending on the year, we have goal setting meeting in the beginning of January.
But I've, I've always tried to get them earlier, so we're not doing this in September and October when it's finally done.
Yeah, agreed. Okay. Um, so does anybody want to add as an agenda item or just look at what I've got and we can throw it on special town council meeting next month?
This wouldn't go through like the, it's circulated council item, it wouldn't go through personnel first or anything, or?
It's up to you guys.
It could go through personnel.
I was thinking if we went through personnel. I was thinking if we went through personnel, then they could come through and have something to present to the council, and instead of us sitting here for hours-
Yeah.
Trying to come through with something to-
All right, well, we'll set up personal subcommittee meeting.
Can we see it? Can you still hand it out?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. I'll pass that out after the news over. Okay. All right.
So this, so this is kind, this is kind of on pause, and we're not doing this one?
Yeah, don't, don't go through filling this one out yet. Um, we're gonna have a subcommittee meeting, um, come forward with something, and we can bring it forward to the next special meeting.
Thank you, sir.
And Mary can get our brown folders back.
Whatever you wanna do.
All right. Um, moving on, item fourteen, we have nothing for unfinished business. Item fifteen, fifteen A, consideration and action on a resolution to authorize the town managers to execute a memorandum of understanding between the town and the Killenly DPW bargaining unit regarding mechanics wages. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Ms. Wakefield, second by Ms. Barclay. Ms. Claudia, can you go over this, please?
So this, um, is a MOU between the town and one specific unit, the Killenly DPW unit, um, and it is only impacting two positions, our mechanic position and our lead mechanic. Um, as you know, we've, uh, had been trying to hire our third mechanic for over two years and was unsuccessful with that, and it was really just because of wages. Every time we would get a successful candidate and get to the hiring point, we'd get to the wage, which is specified in the union contract. In that union contract, it's not like a range, it is a set dollar figure for the, um, for their pay rate. Um, the person would turn it down. Um, so while the third mechanic position was, and I, you know, supported that removing the third position from the budget, um, we still have two positions that are categorically below market rate. Um, I begun working with the personnel subcommittee in January about trying to address this because, you know, they are both very talented individuals and, um, are still managing to maintain the fleet by, and keeping really the repairs in-house, not having to contract out. Um, we had done, uh, the highway director had done a market study of other municipal shops, um, not looking at private sector at all, looking at just municipal shops, and, um, we were well below the median, just the basic median, we were well below median on that. So, the proposal before you is to increase the mechanic rate from thirty-one twenty-eight an hour to thirty-two seventy-two an hour. That is a four-point-six percent increase. And then the lead mechanic is significantly below market, moving that one from thirty-one seventy-five an hour to thirty-five twelve an hour. That is a ten-point-six percent increase. The total impact of this for the year is ten thousand eight hundred, um, and that would be requested to be remove, moved from contingency. The current contingency balance is a hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred, and while we were creating the budget, we did contemplate this, because again, was working with the personnel subcommittee on this, uh, well before this. Um, the personnel subcommittee did review this at their July twenty-third meeting and unanimously recommended this to the town council for approval. Um, you will note within that MOU, while we are getting ready to go into negotiations with that unit in this upcoming year, it does specifically state that the union agrees that this is not a basis for, uh, contract negotiation, that it is specific to these two, and I will say the unit has been very, um, acknowledging of that. They recognize that these two positions are categorically drastically below market, and, um, they really wanna, you know, we, we really need to retain the talent that we have. So, um, they have already ratified this, they have already accepted this MOU, so, um, they knew that it needed to go to personnel subcommittee and then ultimately here to the town council for final approval.
So where does that, um, increase bring, um, Killenly in regards to, um, other municipalities?
So we are right about the median, we're just a little below median on, um, other municipalities, so it's not like we're even coming, you know, we're not even cresting the hump of median, um, but we are, you know, making some significant strides towards getting to median.
I will say, working in the field and having gone through a job search last year, um, and looking at some municipal jobs, I completely agree with Mary that we're a little below the median, um, without a doubt. But it definitely makes a difference, and, and right now, it's tough to find mechanics. So if we were to lose those positions, filling those positions, I have a feeling would be difficult, especially where we're sitting at pay scale.
Excuse you, Mary, what was the original hourly, and I know it was four-point-six, but just for the regular mechanic?
The regular mechanic, the current rate, wage rate is thirty-one twenty-eight an hour, and it would move to thirty-two seventy-two.
You said it was four-point-six?
Yeah, so it's a dollar forty-four increase an hour.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? We have motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is item fifteen B, discussion on vision committee marketing material for upcoming workshop. Um, I did look over the flyer that we had. Um, one thing I did wanna change a little bit, because if you look at the wording of it, where it says, "The town council is seeking input on how to form a committee," I just think that we need to put a stronger message forward than that. Um, my suggestion was, bear with me one second, I have it written down. There we go. Um, instead of that, um, that one phrase, that one, that one sentence, my thought was, we put in something like, "The town council is seeking community members from all parts of town who are interested in helping shape the direction and future of Killenly." I think that brings a little bit more of a concise message forward, um, rather than just the town council seeking input on how to form a committee. Um, I think about the fact that as far as a council, I think we know how to form a committee. I'm just looking for more of trying to draw people in, and I just thought that was something. Um, the rest of it, I, um, a- as far as the part of how many members, how should it be made up, um, and other topics that should be considered, I'm okay with leaving that in there. Um, I definitely like the part about the vision committee will play a crucial role in community engagement, um, setting priorities and communications with the council. Um, I, I mean, and that was just my one thing I wanted to throw out there. Um, I don't know if there's anything else, any other ideas anybody has as far as this, this flyer for the workshop?
Past experience, people don't read. Um, so the more verbiage, the more verbiage you put in there, they get lost. Um, so, uh, my experience is bullet points. Um, I like the bullet points. I like, you know, keep it, you wanna, if somebody's really, really interested in coming and being involved in Killenly, I think, ma- maybe change that sentence a little bit, but I wouldn't get too wordy with, with what you're looking for. Or, you know, even putting, "Looking for community members to help," and then, you know, and this is what the vision, this is what the vision committee is gonna do. I mean, the, I hate, I hate to be Debbie Downer on this, but they, people, I come across professionals that don't read to comprehend. So bullet points, for, for the most part, are the best way to, you, you capture their attention, you know, something that, you know, make it bold, make it limited. Um, but that's just my past, my own personal experience.
We could cut it down to, "The town council is seeking community members who are interested in helping shape Killenly."
Yeah, 'cause it's not really much, it's not really longer than the, the last part of it.
Now, where's, who's, where's this gonna be, who's this gonna be going to, Mary?
Uh, so we'll be putting this in the Turnpike Buyer and Shoppers Guide. Um, we'll be putting it up on our websites, both, you know, all of our websites, the library, recreation, town hall. Um, we'll be posting flyers in all of our buildings as well. Um, so, yeah, we're gonna be trying to get it out there, but, um, you know, this is, this is what the ad is gonna really look like, um, largely for the shoppers in Turnpike Buyer. So, um, we wanted to get it out there sooner than later, 'cause you're, you know, getting close to a month before it. We want to make sure that it has everything that you're really looking for.
And will be, will we be sharing this, like, with the KBA? Can I send it over?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. We'll be sharing it with all of those. Absolutely. Yeah, Chamber of Commerce, all of those, yeah. Yeah.
Any other comments? Any other suggestions? All right. So, Mary, you had the-
This is what I have. Commu-, uh, uh, "The town council is seeking community members who are interested in shaping Killenly." Is that correct?
Shaping the future of Killenly.
Shaping, interested in shaping the future of Killenly. So the town council is seeking community members who are interested in shaping the future of Killenly.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Which doesn't necessarily mean reimagining, just saying.
Just planting flowers along the way.
All right, so we'll move on to the agenda. Next item up is council member reports and comments. Uh, Ms. Grandowski, would you like to start?
Conservation Commission, they were here the other day, so you got a good, a good action, action, review of what they're doing, better than what I could present. Thank you.
Uh, nothing. Uh, Agricultural Commission was canceled last month, you know, same as tomorrow.
Just got a comment, Mary. Um, I believe this is purple loom stripe, right? This flower on the, on this top picture here?
Oh, you're looking to own bow?
Yeah, I should've brought it up.
That's okay.
And that's, it's supposed to be a super, um-
Invasive.
Invasive species that really takes over waterways, so just maybe do some research on it, might be-
I'll look at it.
Might be a good idea to remove all that, and then start fresh.
We'll look at that.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
So I did, uh, the WPCA, and they were here, and it's all about the, uh, moratorium, the plants in compliance, but the main thing was the moratorium.
Thank you. Ms. Cattila?
Uh, the permanent building committee, I missed the, the site walk on the, uh, special meeting on July thirty-first. Uh, they had one the next Wednesday, which was at the, uh, Westfield Ave building, uh, for the roof. There's some issues with the roof that they've discovered, and, um, they were presented with a couple of different options on different directions to go, but they paused those and they're having more tests done to determine which is the best route to go.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Wakefield?
Uh, salad waste met at the end of July. Um, nothing, nothing too, um, initially, the, the permits looked like they were go- going out a little faster than they were, but they kinda leveled off. Um, I thought maybe it might, we might see something, just because the cost of having your trash picked up has gone up so much. The, um, did, I did the ribbon cutting at the Crow's Nest that week as well. Um, great place, they got some really, really delicious, um, sandwiches, and, and their smoothies were good. They got a very nice menu. Um, you know, good hours to get there. Um, let's see. Um, I was, um, up on the roof with Kevin and, and the permanent building. That, that was definitely an interesting roof. Um, when I heard the comment that this was one of our better roofs, I was like, okay. Um, but, um, I also joined Mary in attending, um, the chamber, um, event with, for, with Senator Murphy, um, and along with the walkthrough with Patty and Tony, we all did the walkthrough at, with access and saw, um, what their plans are and that, so. Um, and then we have a ribbon cutting tomorrow for monogrammet down, down on Main Street there, so.
Thank you. Um, I did attend the walkthrough at KMS. Um, the issues were talked about earlier, and, uh, zoning board of appeals didn't have any applications.
So, was it last month we picked the new director?
Yes, it was, actually.
Yes. So, um, last month, we interviewed the two final, um, choices for NCOG, and Jim Rivers was chosen to replace John Filczek. Um, I'm not sure when he started-
September.
September? Okay, so he'll start. I'm sure they have all the information on the website. Um, Eastern Regional Tourism District has an opportunity for all our small businesses. Um, they will be, they have a booth at the Biggie, and they are offering to all our businesses, um, you can put together flyers, and we will get them up to the booth. Um, right now, the only business that's reached out to me with flyers, pamphlets, is Ace's Defense. So if anyone's listening and you wanna get your business out there at the Biggie, free, no charge, um, free publicity, marketing, let me know. You can send me, um, you can either call me, my phone number's on the website, obviously, or email me, and we'll get those over to Andrea. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Barclay?
The, um, Housing Authority meeting was canceled from the planning and zoning meeting on July fifteenth. There was a training session, um, presented by, um, what's his name? Ken Slater, the, um, the town attorney, and it was on, um, policies and procedures. Um, the, um, the highlights of that was, um, there were a lot of questions, um, in regards to, um, participation from, um, citizens and also, um, council, council member participation. So, um, citizen participation is a privilege, it is not required. Um, counselors are able to, um, participate in public comment because they are citizens and they are one vote, so they are able to participate. And, um, the liaison to the planning and zoning, um, is able to participate in, um, public, in, in commenting and is, is able to bring back any comments, um, from the town council, and that, um, they can, cannot be silenced at the meeting.
I think Ken is gonna have some follow-up on that. Um, he was asking whether or not the town council members are ex-officio members or just liaisons. There's a difference between the two. Um, I think he believed that night that the council members were ex-officio, like Board of Rec, um, which is a different status than liaison. So, we're gonna have some follow-up, just so that way you better understand the, the, the conversation, but I wanted to just bring that to your attention.
So, um, one of the concerns is, um, at the meetings, we're told that the public doesn't come and they don't participate, but then again, we're told that it's a privilege to participate, and, um, if there is, um, I will just give it, an example, as the Hartford Pike, um, the, um, plaza that's going up, you know, uh, that zoning was changed in, um, the early twenty, twenty hundreds, and people did, um, were concerned about being, it being changed to Village Commercial, and it said, "Don't worry about it." So now, once, um, once the, um, ordinances are changed, um, and everything is fulfilled by the builder, um, they, it can't be refused. So, you're, in one, one sentence, it's, "People don't come to participate," and in the other sentence, "Well, we don't have to let them speak." So it's very contradictory to, um, having public participation, and the other point was that they work on the ordinances and it's brought to, um, the public, um, in a public meeting after it's gone to the attorney, and the feeling is, is it's too late when you already brought it to the attorney and you have all of this written up and you don't want any participation from the public until it's, the, it's already written up. That's also, I find, contradictory. The public should be able to participate in any changes, because you're asking for their participation in one, in one sentence, and then in the other, you're saying, "It's a privilege and we don't have to let you speak," so. But that was, um- But that was, it was, it was also to provide the continuing education credits that the planning and zoning is required by the state now, so that was a very good presentation. And there was just a site plan review for the owner of 978 Hartford Pike. He would like to convert his existing detached garage into a detached secondary dwelling unit. And the next workshop will be on August 19th at 6 o'clock, and the planning and zoning meeting will follow at 7. And that is it.
Thank you. Ms. Clori, I do have one question. Does the council, town council have the authority, possibly through ordinance, to require all boards and commissions to allow for public comment?
I would have to ask that question of the town attorney.
Thank you. All right. Next item up, executive session, and we have nothing for executive session, we'll move on to item 18, adjournment.
So moved.
We've got a motion from Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Ms. Barclay, to adjourn the meeting, discussion. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.